I'm sitting there. Don't look at me like that.
Will you pray?
Always.
I meant the truth. Pass this down. Those are from Ryan Baker and he asked that you all attend.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for October 1st, 2019. We'll begin this meeting, like we do each meeting, with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Councilman Alexander is going to offer our prayer and Councilman Fan will lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand, please.
Let every heart pray. Eternal grace of God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day that has created. We thank you for the city. We thank you for these council persons. And, Lord, we just pray that everything we say and do tonight in this meeting will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name we do pray in every heart set.
Amen.
Please, you want me to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the order first, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Fan.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next, before you all, you have the meetings of the minutes of the meeting on September 3rd, 2019.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander,
or any additions or corrections.
One teeny tiny little error. That's on page five where on the first bullet point, it says "ready to this development" instead of "ready for this development." Tiny mistake.
I'm sure the council's amenable to that correction. Any others? With that, all in favor of approving the minutes for September 3rd, 2019, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Minutes are approved unanimously. Next on the agenda is public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can come forward and speak to any item that is on this evening's agenda. I will tell you that there is a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to items that are not on the agenda. You'll have that opportunity as well. If you come forward, we ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address. I will also tell you there are three public hearings on the agenda for the evening. One is a public hearing on Fairfield Inn. I do want to address that. That public hearing was advertised before the council had that at work session. It is not moving forward at the city council. However, because we advertised that public hearing, we are going ahead and having it. If that were to ever come before the council again, it would actually come up through the work session again and would probably have to go to a public hearing again. So it's not moving forward at this time, but that public hearing does remain there because it was advertised prior. There's also a public hearing about the Dollar General plans. And then two public hearings related to the plan of service and the annexation for the 57 acres at State Route 109, State Route 25, and Albert Gallatin. So those are the public hearings. If you have comments related to any of those items, you should wait and speak to those under those public hearings. Otherwise, public hearing on agenda-related items is now open and you may come forward and speak. Okay, seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed and move forward now to mayor's comments. Under mayor's comments, I do have several things, but I'm going to begin by presenting a very special proclamation this evening. I'm going to ask Kaylee Lucas and her family to join me at the podium, please. Please stand next to me. You all may recognize this lady because you may have read about her in the paper recently. You've just played in Pebble Beach, right?
Yes.
Wonderful. We have a proclamation recognizing her accomplishments this tonight, and I'm so honored to present this to her. Are we to the proclamation, Julia? Then she may say thank you. She didn't want to speak, that's why I'm saying that. But this says, whereas Kaylee Lucas is a 17-year-old Gallatin resident, and whereas she has played golf all four years at Gallatin High School, where she currently is a senior this year, and whereas Kaylee was part of the 2016 Girls Golf All District Team, 2016 and '17 MVP, a runner-up for the 2018 Girls Golf District Team, and a first T of Tennessee participant and junior coach for five years, and whereas she attended the Life Skills and Leadership Academy in Boise, Idaho from July 24th through 30th, 2019, and whereas Kaylee was one of the nine participants selected from around the United States for the Cobain Peak Performers Program in Los Angeles, California. Did I say that right? All right. From August 21st through 24th, 2019, and whereas she was one of 78 students selected from around the United States and the only participant from the state of Tennessee for the Pure Insurance Championship in Pebble Beach, California from September 24th through 30th, 2019, and whereas Kaylee has many achievements to include 2019 Volunteer Girls State Delegate, the National Honor Society Chapter President, maintaining a 4.0 GPA, Executive Board Member of Student Council, Yearbook Editor for 2018-2019, National Beta Club Member, Key Club Member, DECA Officer, serving on the City of Gallatin Youth Council, and volunteering for Tim Tebow's Night to Shine Foundation. You might wonder how she has time for golf. But now, therefore, I'm Paige Brown, Mayor of Gallatin. Do here my honor and recognize Kaylee Lucas for her many accomplishments and for being a role model to others in our city. So I ask you all to join me in congratulating Ms. Kaylee Lucas for her accomplishments. We are most impressed. We're going to take a picture while we're all standing. So, we're very, very impressed with all that you've done. We want to know what you're going to do after school.
Oh, my gosh.
You don't know yet?
I did not know officially yet. I'm going to tour colleges to play golf next week during fall break, and then I'm also going to tour colleges to not play golf, so that way I have like both ways open. So, kind of exploring that. We actually have to talk about that tonight, so...
Well, I'm sorry, I made you pitch on the spot. Congratulations. I think you'll have many opportunities ahead of you. May you be offered some great scholarships on the academic and the golf front.
Hopefully. And thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was fun. Okay, a few upcoming events I want to tell you about. Citizens Police Academy continues tomorrow night. The Power of Ten Regional Summit is this Thursday in Nashville, if any of the council would like to attend. The Gallatin Government Institute continues this week with Planning, Codes, and IT. Last week, we had Administration, great group of individuals interested in our city government. That was fun to do. On this Friday is the Manufacturing Day Lunch at Volunteer State Community College. I imagine you all have been invited and some will attend. This Saturday is David Gregory's birthday. He says yay. Also this Saturday is the Main Street Festival. If you've not been before, you must attend. It's an all-day festival happening from 10 till 5 on our square with probably a couple hundred booths and many thousand people. That night is the Annual Spirits of Sumner Candlelight Cemetery Tour, and this is an event that's really grown in recent years. It's really powerful, great actors portraying people who are buried in our historic city cemetery. I would encourage you to attend. There's also another special event related to that tour this week. It happens on Friday night. It's a VIP party. It's happening at the future home of the Sumner County Museum. Tickets are still available. You can get those by contacting the Sumner County Museum. On Sunday is the National Firefighters Memorial Day. Flags will be at half-staff on that day, and now you'll know why. And next week is fall break for Sumner schools, so we may have better traffic around the city of Gallatin. And then on Wednesday, the 9th of October, is the Fall Dessert Fest at Morningside. I think that's all the events I want to share with you. I do want to give a shout out to Parks and Recreation and I guess particularly Mary Garkey. Great Pawpalooza this past weekend out at the Triple Creek Park at the pavilion. I went last year, it was wonderful. This year, it was about 10 times better. They had lots of attendees and lots of exhibitors, so that will keep on rocking, I'm sure. With that, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number one is public hearing on ordnance 01909-48. Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving a preliminary master development plan for Fairfield Inn Hotel and 7.245-acre lot zoned MRO, multiple residential and office district, located at 801 Browns Lane. This is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now open on ordnance 01909-48, which is not moving forward, but you may speak at this time if you so desire. All right, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on ordnance 01909-48 closed. Moving to item two, which is public hearing on ordnance 01909-49. Councilman Hayes.
This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving a preliminary master development plan for Dollar General, 1.71 acres, located north of State Route 386 and east of Greenleaf Boulevard. This is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing on ordnance 01909-49 is now open. You may come forward at this time if you wish to speak. Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public...
Wait, can we have a... Can I ask a question?
You may.
I guess, you know, we sent it back to Planning Commission. They came back with the same plan that they brought to us the first time.
I don't think it's the same plan. Bill, will you want to come up here?
Yes, it's identical to what they had.
Yeah, the... And I was going to present this next week at the council committee, but I can mention it now. The Planning Commission did consider the plan that y'all had sent back to them that was not initially reviewed by them and feel that it was appropriate plan and comply with code. So that's the plan they're going to be recommending to you. It does show some onings on there, so we'll be presenting that to you next week as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So no one wishing to speak under that. Did I say it was closed already? I think I did. Okay, it's closed. We're moving on to item three, which is public hearing on Resolution R1909-52. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a resolution. This is a public hearing on Resolution, City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services for annexation of 57.10 acres on State Route 109, State Route 25, and Albert Gallatin Avenue right of ways located adjacent to the current city limits, including right of ways of Red River Road, Highway 25, from East Station Camp to a point west of Grassy Glen Drive, and the right of way of 109, south side of the intersection, State Route 25, to the north side of right of way of Albert Gallatin Extension, and the right of way of Albert Gallatin Avenue Extension to the east right of way of 109 to a point near East Camp Creek and existing city limits and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now open on Resolution R1909-52, and I'm sure that physical description is perfectly clear in everybody's mind. Public hearing is now open. You may come forward.
No, it's just for...
Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on Resolution R1909-52 closed. Is there... Did you want to comment? Okay. Next is public hearing on Resolution R1909-53. Councilman Overton again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of City of Gallatin, Sumner County, to annex and 57.10 acres portion is... And it's the same description as I just read and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open on Resolution R1909-53. You may come forward at this time if you'd like to speak.
Hi there. Michelle Juvants, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I just have a simple petition to Gallatin City Council to defer annexation of any further territory until the annexation audit is complete and all prior annexation defaults are remedied. The City of Gallatin should not disregard state law, Tennessee Code 651102B5, which says a municipality may not annex any other territory if the municipality is in default on any prior plan of services.
Thank you for your comments. I will tell you, we do not have any defaults currently, so... The city attorney has checked into that based on previous comment, and we do not have any default.
Okay, I'd like to talk to you about that afterwards and talk to you about some details on that. Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening on this public hearing? May you do so at this time. I see no one. This is public close. We are closing public hearing on Resolution R1909-53. Item number five is second reading on ordnance 01909-45. Councilman Fan.
Second reading, ordnance 01909-45. Ordinance for appropriating insurance recoveries in the amount of $7,305.43 from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund for repair of damages to public works equipment. I so move.
Motion to approve by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordnance 01909-45. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number six is second reading on ordnance 01909-47. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. I sought appropriated $2,500 from Tennessee Valley Authority to the Gallatin Economic Development Agency, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordnance 01909-47. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. Item seven is Resolution R1909-49. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution supporting the establishment of the Big Station Camp Boulevard Transportation Improvement District. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is Resolution R1909-49. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number eight is first reading on ordnance 01909-46. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, amending the code of ordinances of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Chapter 16 Traffic and Vehicles by adding Article 8, establishing the Big Station Camp Boulevard Transportation Improvement District, repealing conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordnance 01909-46. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number nine is a dangerous building discussion at 442 Pace Street, and Chuck Stewart, our building official and su... Well, actually not. And Susan H. McCauley will be discussing this.
Kevin Black, Building Coach Department, I'm here tonight.
Yes, Mr. Black is here on behalf of Codes tonight. Is there anyone here on behalf of the owner? Okay, and this building is located at 442 Pace Street.
Just get your name in there. Okay. Patricia Ben, my old address is 442 Pace. I now reside with my brother at 430 Bligh. This building is heirs. I've been dealing with this for 10 years now. I've been paying property taxes and everything on it, so really, my hands are tied. I have no half. I have... My attorney is Philip Kelly. In 2015, he done a quitclaim for me for all the heirs. I've only had one relative sign it and did it right. I'm just in a mess with my relatives. Like I say, nobody has me do anything, but I would do the best I can. I just need time. I'm on disability. I have glaucoma, so it's just hard on me right now to do things there. I mean, I've had numerous people tell me they would do this, they would do that, but when push comes to shove, nobody's helped me do anything, so I could have just a little time to try to get it done. I don't have the funds to have it demolished right now, but if you just give me some time...
And I... I will let you know that due to the fact that there is an issue with the heirs, we did notice this publicly for two weeks in the newspaper so that all heirs could appear. And we, you know, sent it to you also, but we did put it in the paper just to ensure that there was notice for everyone.
So we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Paige. Well, that's...
Ms. Bennett.
Well, I'm glad to know that.
Ms. Bennett, you said you'd like to have some more time. Do you mean you'd like to clean it up, or how much time are you talking about?
Are you going to keep the building?
I'm going to have to... No, sir. I'm... I've had it. I've had it with this, you know. Like I say, I'm doing property and city taxes on 440 and 442 Pace all by myself, so...
No, it just need to be cleaned up, demolished and cleaned. It's already falling in.
So I've got to get it cleaned out, and I've got some antiques and stuff in there. Like I say, I've had people for the past four years, so they're going to help me do this, going to help me do that, but nobody does, so it's really left up to me to try to get it done.
How much time you need to take care of it?
Ah, just a while to do this off a little bit, I can get started. My brother Erskine, he tells me every day he's going to get somebody up there, but he don't... Don, he... Whatever, but I'm not worried about them now. It's just on me to get it done myself.
Ms. Bennett, are you wanting to have time to clean it up and bring it up to Codes, or you just wanting to clean your stuff up?
I just want to clean it up, clean it, and just get it tore down. It's not even...
So you want... You want to... I'm sorry to interrupt, but you want to get your things out of there, it sounds like, and then have it demolished?
Yes, ma'am. So I was really wanting to see, you know, what the city would charge, because I don't have anybody to help me. And would it put a lien on it? And if they did put a lien on it, how much time would I have back, you know, to pay it back?
Can the city give her an estimate on...
Probably not tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I wouldn't think we could do it tonight.
But yes, I think typically we can give an estimate, can't we? Yes, we typically will give an estimate to let the homeowner know what that would possibly... What the fees would be. But if the city were to demolish the building, we would put a lien on it.
Okay. And then after it's paid off?
Or when you sell the property.
I don't know, because like I say, nobody will sign my quitthing. I only have one relative. I had that done in 2015, so I've been battling with them four years to sign that.
Could I ask a question? Do the city give constituent like dumpster for one-time thing for a year? Is that something we do?
No.
Zach? I know we used to do that. Yeah, we have too.
Oh, I mean, I'm not saying we didn't at some point, but that's not anything I've ever heard of.
Yeah, we've done it, because I've had it done.
We do allow for a one-time dumpster.
That's what I thought. Okay.
But I mean, we don't give them a dumpster for a year. How does that work?
Well, not for a year.
Oh, I thought you said...
Ms. Bennett, are you disputing that this building is dangerous?
Oh, no, it is dangerous. I mean, I had my neighbor, she had like six little boys. All the stuff is torn down. They did that. They broke my windows. Bad kids, real bad. You know, they broke all my bricks off my mailbox, but they're gone now, thank God. So maybe I can...
So you don't dispute it's dangerous, and you admit that it should be demolished?
It is. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My question is, do you need 30 days? Do you need 60 days? How long you need in order to get your stuff cleaned out of it so it can be torn down?
You give me 90 days. I've got to get some help. That's my problem. You know, I have people, like I said, I have people promise me, but they don't, so...
I think... I mean, I don't have a problem giving it 90 days so we can get somebody in the community to have it done.
You could do 90 days for her to have it demolished, at which point the city would move forward, and in that time, we could certainly get the estimate to her as to the cost of demolition, and then she could come back to us if she felt like she wanted to pay for it herself. That's... That would be my thought related to that 90 days. Is that in line?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, and if we are going to have an order to demolish the building, I would like someone from our Codes Department, because this body has to make, and you have to do an order and you have to state their reasons. So we need... I know you've admitted that it needs to be demolished and it's dangerous, but we need some testimony from someone that can delineate exactly what issues are with the building.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so Mr. Black would be the one to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Let him speak for a minute.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Bennett, that you'd like to add?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the condition of the building, of course, as your pictures show, the front porch all collapsed on it, but now, since those pictures were taken with on the rainstorms especially we had back in mid-August, now the roof in the back of the house is collapsing. So it does have holes in the roof, and in addition to the holes in the windows and the walls around the windows, the whole roof is caving in.
And I would also direct the council to, in your packet, there's a dangerous building. Show cause notice, and there are more items that are listed in that notice.
So do you need a motion for a fairer dangerous building to get 90 days to clean it down?
I do.
I'd like to make a motion that it is a dangerous building, and we give them 90 days to clean it down.
I second that.
Clean it out means...
Get her personal stuff out, because she won't let it...
Are you saying 90 days for her to clean it up or it will be demolished? Or you giving her 90 days to clean it out, and then we're going to come back and have another hearing?
No, no, no. The person have to demolish it.
Okay.
If she don't have it dumped in the 90-day period...
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that, on the record.
If she don't have it done in 90 days, we'll demolish it in 90 days.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander, and during that time period, Mr. Wilkinson will get with her related to the cost of demolition. All right, motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, that is passed unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Thank you, Mr. Black. And that concludes the regular agenda. We move now to other business. I do have one item of other business that I need to bring before this council, along with Ms. Debbie Johnson, our Personnel Director. She'd like to come forward. Hasem.
This mandatory follow-up.
Oh, I can discuss that with you right after I finish this piece. So, Ms. Johnson, I asked her to come forward to the podium because I have very sad news to share. Ms. Johnson seems to think that she wants to leave our city.
Oh, no. All right, not happy. No, not happy. Who's going to wear new sneakers?
And some of us are very, very disappointed in that, but she's looking at a retirement date. We're negotiating at this point. I think she wants the end of December. I'm pushing for like the end of next December, but we're trying... We'll probably settle somewhere in January. But that means that we have to move forward with hiring a director fairly swiftly, and she has a proposed plan of attack as to how we might embark on a search for our new HR director, and I would like her to share that with you all.
Thank you, Mayor. I told the mayor some time ago of my plans, and I spoke to you several months ago to tell you about my plans to retire when I called you about restructuring my office. I will say what will stand out in my mind, in my heart, are the good people, the good colleagues that I've met here and the department heads that I've worked with. They are a great team. You have a great mayor and a great team of department heads that are working together They are a great team. You have a great mayor and a great team of department heads that are working together to accomplish things. And you have short council meetings, and I'm gonna try to make this short tonight, and I'm very appreciative of that. We will use, we have an adopted process for department head hiring that we put in place in two thousand and fifteen. So it is a process that we've used that was approved by resolution to recruit department heads. Within those personnel rules, there are certain steps, the advertising of thirty days. For example, the review of, the HR department reviews the applications. But the rules state that the HR director will recommend to you an expert panel that, for your approval, and I'd like to recommend that panel to you tonight. The panel will review those applications, submit to the council those interview candidates that you are to review and approve, uh from the larger pool of candidates. So the expert cand, panel that I would like to recommend includes the city attorney, the finance director, our police chief, Richard Stokes, for those of you who may or may not know, Mr. Stokes is um our MTS HR consultant. He has many, many years with MTS. He sits as the past president of the International Public Management Association for HR. He's also in the southern region and he's the executive director of the Tennessee chapter for the International Personnel Management Association. He has been at MTS since nineteen eighty-six. He is also retiring in December, which I found out, which I asked for him to help us out, so he has agreed to do that. George Dalton also is a person that we highly respect within uh the city and within most cities. He works for uh the Public Entity Partners, formerly known as the Pool. And Mr. Dalton has previous local government experience with the city of Alcoa as their assistant to the city manager and also the HR director. Uh he's been uh with Public Entity Partners, I think, for maybe well over twenty-one years. So I'd like to recommend that group. I would also like to sit on that uh group and help narrow the pool down for you and bring to you a good list to interview.
So Debbie, once you bring us that pool, we'll be the ones to interview, however many of y'all bring us, and then we're the ones to make the decision on who to hire, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Out of that pool, out of that group?
Yes, sir.
Or we reject them and get another group, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify that.
We're also, before I forget, we're looking at an interview date, trying to avoid the holidays of November nineteenth. If you could mark your calendars or just tentatively set that aside so that we don't end up, we only have two council meetings in early December, so we're trying to work to make sure we're avoiding the holiday period.
And we would do the interviews like we did with the fire chief, if you remember back that far, where we actually would interview them in the afternoon prior to the council meeting and you would interview them one-on-one with a, you know, rotating basis so that everybody would have the chance to interview everyone.
Right.
Motion to accept this slate? I make a motion to accept this slate.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love, any discussion on it? All right, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I'd just be remiss if I didn't say, uh, working with Ms. Johnson, I, I really, this was a shock to me, first time I heard you, but I'm gonna really miss you when you leave, and it's not because of the sneaker candy bar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, 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 it's not, but.
If you don't know, if, if, if people don't know, she brings Councilman Alexander's sneakers all the time.
But, but you, you have been just such a beautiful person to work with, and I really appreciate you and I wish you all the best of luck. Hope you have a nice chicken dinner for your birthday.
Thank you. Well, Councilman Overton also asked me um to clarify for you all about the required utility board training. Everyone who was elected basically last year must have twelve hours of training complete by election date of this year. So um it's not for those, it's not, I mean, it'd be good for those who were elected two years prior to, to go ahead and get their training, but you don't have to until you're re-elected. So anyone that was elected last year has to complete twelve hours before the election date, which I think was November sixth last year. Does that sound right? Is that sound, November third, November sixth, something like that. And there are a couple of opportunities to get that training. You can get the training through um some classes happening in Hartsfield next week. You can get the training online and then we may be able to find some other opportunities as well, but the clock is ticking.
Monday, Tuesday, night, fourteen fifty, it's in Hartsfield, but it's from three to nine.
Three to nine, and.
I'd like to point out that I'm halfway through my educational course online.
I'm gonna ask you some questions about it.
Awesome. Oh, I'd like to point out I'm on hour five of that course. I'm finished. We'll resend the link. The link's been sent to you, but we'll resend it.
Can y'all resend it too?
Yes. If you, if the training is not completed by the required members, the city gets turned into the board of the, basically the comptroller.
So all of us not required?
Just if you were elected last year. Um you will be required once somebody is re-elected.
Well, it just came into effect, so.
Came into effect like in April of seventeen? And so if you were elected in sixteen, it wasn't in effect yet, but it's still great to have it, so. But anyway, we get turned into the. If we did not complete our training, we get turned into the state and it jeopardizes us.
You didn't answer my question there, so John and I would not have to do it.
No, you're not exempt. If you run for office again and are elected, then you would have to do it at that time.
But the ones that got elected last year does not have to do it?
Must do. Yep, the ones that were elected last year must do it.
So Sean and I don't either then.
No, Craig is not elected.
Craig, you just did get elected.
You and John, they both just got elected, so y'all got to do it.
We got elected two years ago.
Who, who in here in office, who ran for office in two thousand and eighteen? It was Councilman Alexander, Councilman Hayes, Councilman Overton, and me. And Councilman Dan. So that's who has to. North C. Do we have this clear now?
Well, that's good to know now, 'cause I've taken.
We are really impressing the department heads. I don't believe they're transferable. Nor can you pay someone to attend. So thank you all. Any, any other other business from this council this evening? Ms. Kettrell has something. I think we need the diversion.
Mayor, I have uh two liquor store that are, that are being sold and I have the certificate of compliance for them. You want me to do them separate?
Yes, please.
Liquor World will be my first one. It's located on Belvedere Drive. The new owners are gonna be NJ Investments LLC doing businesses Liquor World. That's Nihal Patel, and they are in compliance with everything. They just need their certificate of compliance to move forward.
Motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously.
Now, my second one is one oh nine, uh wines and liquors. It has also sold and the Saint Patel is the new owner of this liquor store and everything is, he has, is compliant to.
Motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? All in favor of the approval for one oh nine liquors, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously as well. Anyone else on this council with other business this evening? All right, seeing none, I will move on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can come forward and address something that's not on the agenda. Introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Good evening, Frank Marchese, M A R C H E S E, five eighty-nine Harris Lane, resident and official business owner in this town. I am here tonight to talk once again about Harris Lane between Long Hollow and Greenlee, which I'll refer to only now as Harris Lane. I felt it was important enough to come here tonight and delay my birthday celebration so that I can speak to you about the conditions once again on this road.
Is it your birthday?
Yes, ma'am.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I have written a letter dated September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen to Councilman Hayes and copied each of you and Mr. McCord and Mr. Tuttle. This letter requests that a dead end be created on Harris Lane. Harris Lane no longer needs to be considered the throughway to Greenlee Boulevard. Greenlee Boulevard can be accessed from Long Hollow Pike. I have proposed removing the pork chop at Harris Lane and Long Hollow Pike, allowing drivers to make a legal left-hand turn onto Long Hollow Pike from Harris Lane as well as a right-hand turn. This should only be done if the opposite end of Harris Lane is dead-ended at Greenlee Boulevard. I am consistently told that people will be upset if Harris Lane is dead-ended. I am asking, who are these people that are going to be upset? The inconvenience of two-tenths of a mile, that's what we're talking about, is what I'm referring to. Harris Lane is a total of three-tenths of a mile in that section. Long Hollow to Greenlee is five-tenths or half a mile. So people would have to drive an additional two-tenths of a mile. I think it's about time to listen to the residents of Harris Lane who are very, very upset about the speeders, the illegal left-hand turns, and the overall darkness of the street. Not just Harris Lane, but those on Long Hollow. Some of my neighbors are also upset. It's an accident waiting to happen. I have witnessed food delivery drivers, specifically a number of times Jets Pizza, large commercial trailers, large commercial vehicles hauling trailers, passenger vehicles and motorcycles making the illegal left-hand turn. I would prefer not to have to get hit by a car, or my dog get hit by a car, in order for somebody to do something about this situation on this road. Harris Lane no longer needs to support the ADT, average daily traffic, of one thousand to three thousand vehicles. I have counted vehicles on many days and we rarely exceed two hundred cars. The city's own subdivision regulations dated four twenty-six-ten state that a lane shall have a speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour or less, lane based on two hundred and one to five hundred cars per day. Now, I'm also told numerous times that, you know, this has been discussed in the past. Well, the former owners of our home, we feel had no interest in what's happening on their own street and appear to agree with everything proposed to them with no consideration for future owners. If they were consulted or agreed to any permanent changes on Harris Lane, I ask that those be reconsidered with our input, since we are the long-term residents. They are not. I also have concerns, and this is just in general, I also have concerns over the construction at the Liberty Creek Development. I am very confused on how a developer can be allowed to build a home in such proximity to the, in such close proximity to the property line. They're building homes with back patios and decks which appear to be encroaching on the P U D E. Also, the developer has threatened us with not putting a fence up to match the fence that we put up. He had contacted us two months ago and agreed to extend the same make and model and use the same contractor as the fence that we put up to the, um approaching the drainage basin in Liberty Creek. Now, we've been very good neighbors to them. They have not been to us. So yes, we did put a sign out in protest of Liberty Creek. Not within a half an hour after that sign going up, he called and was very upset, told us we weren't being good neighbors. I, I don't have all the details of my conversation, my husband does, but he did say that, that a fence company was due to come out, but now he's not going to, and he's gonna consider putting the split rail horse fence back, maybe. I know I have to talk to city planning about this, um to make sure that they're in compliance with their master development plan. It's, it's a struggle living on this part of this little three-tenths of a mile street, and it shouldn't be. We shouldn't have people speeding down the street. We shouldn't have a completely dark street that streetlight has not worked in months. Actually, today, I went online on the system and put in a, a fix-it form for the street light and the missing street sign at Harris and Greenlee. So I am asking, please reconsider dead-ending the street. If you don't want it dead-ended at Greenlee, then, then dead-end it at Long Hollow. Just do something to make it safer for us. The other side of Harris Lane, on the other side of Long Hollow, is a dead end naturally, 'cause there's a property just at the end, end of the street, so you can't do anything there. I'm just asking for the same consideration on our end of the street. You, you talk about having a Dollar General, which I'm sorry, is that my time?
It is, if you want to wrap up.
Okay. I mean, you talk about putting a Dollar General there and the increased traffic of people cutting through will only, it's only gonna add to that. So please, please, whatever it takes, reconsider dead-ending the street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? You may come forward.
My name is John Emanuel. I live at five eighty-nine Harris Lane. As Frank just said, we have concerns with Liberty Creek. Mr. Waits is the developer. I put a sign up because four or five times we went over to the office, trailer they had there, and we asked them very nicely not to let the people, their contractors, work until eleven o'clock at night, eight o'clock at night. It didn't go anywhere. We then started calling the police department to, for them to come over to chase them out, basically. And I don't think that that is the job of a police officer, to have to chase somebody from working, because the code says from seven to seven. They were working on Sundays for a while. We didn't complain. We didn't say anything. But the minute I put a sign on my front yard, Mr. Waits called me and told me that the fence that we had discussed was no longer gonna happen. And I told him, that's fine. You do what you want, but this is not a one-way deal. It takes both parties to work this out. He doesn't want to hear anything. It's his way or the highway. I also have concerns about on Greenlee, they are, I guess, putting utilities in for development down by the Freedom Church. I have pictures of these holes they have dug, and there is no fence around them. Anybody walking, there's three of them, could fall in these pits, and you would never know they were in there. And I will hand these to you and show you. These are, this is the same one. This is on the corner of uh Greenlee and Harris. And I also think that this town needs to have some code enforcement after seven o'clock at night. Because, like I say, police, they are busy. They don't need to have to uh go to a development to chase workers out because they don't know it's seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emanuel. Anyone else?
Madame Mayor, esteemed members, I still know, I still learn about that. Pascal Javance, one three three five, Long Hollow Park. Liberty Creek, same kind of thing. I have to agree with Frank. As you know, I spend a lot of time on my mower and my field, so I have a, I come back and forward. Plenty of acres, and uh I think the best I seen doing the illegal left turn was actually an eighteen-wheelers uh who realized in the middle of the street that he could not turn, so the guy went back right, back up, block everybody, turn left. Something needs to be done there. If I spent thirty minutes on the field, I probably see five, six cars um making the turn. Nobody cares. So I can agree with Frank on that. Um I think something's gonna happen there and it's gonna be too late, so maybe we should be proactive on that action. And same thing, I saw these people building uh this giant house on the right side near the trees and actually went walk uh the distance between the house and the property line, what I think was the property line because there was the trees, and I did four steps before hitting that to four meters, so probably twelve feet. I don't know how they can do that. I, I haven't seen the master development plan, but uh that sounds kinda bizarre to me that they can put houses so near to the tree line to an agriculture property and stuff. I don't know, there should be a buffer or something, but that's maybe worth looking to it. That was all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, could we put this on our work session for next week, that street out there at Harris Lane?
Harris Lane.
It deserves, as, as many times they've been up here, at least it deserves us some discussion for us to talk about it at a work session. If we could put it on there, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Lance, do you happen to have any update from engineering? Have y'all, are you aware of any discussion? He, of course, is with Stormwater, but I guess he's here on Nick's behalf and you might know something.
No, I am here on Nick's behalf. Well, no, no discussions have really happened in, in the engineering division on this yet. Not that we're for or against it. It just hasn't been brought up to us, so I believe the work session would be.
I'll put it on our work session. We'll talk about it next week.
That'd be good. We'll be prepared.
Okay, thank you. I've made notes just into him. I've sent him stuff in the past, but I don't think we've discussed it, so.
Mr. McCord, I'll ask you one question about the fence. Do you know if they're required, Liberty Creek required to put a fence up back there?
I believe the master plan calls for a rail fence to be constructed along their easterly boundary. We can provide that information as well in conjunction with Harris Lane.
Thank you very much.
It, it's a, it's a site surety issue as opposed to a plat issue.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And next work session is going to be a long one, so everyone be prepared. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I will declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, ladies and evening, ladies and gentlemen, have a lovely evening. Thank you for being with us tonight.